All right, good evening and welcome to this special meeting. We'd like to open this meeting with an opening prayer by Pastor Anthony Scott from First Baptist Church of North Tulsa. Is he here this evening?
No ma'am evidently.
Pastor Rowland?
So we're doing a backup plan with Pastor Rowland.
Okay, Pastor Rowland? Would you like to come forward? Yeah, come on up to the front please if you don't mind. If you all don't mind if we stand and do the pledge first and then do the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh God, how we thank you for this day. We thank you for this evening, this opportunity to come together to discuss, oh God, what's going on in our nation, in our city, in our states. God, we pray that everything will be said and done decently and in order and in everything may your name be glorified. Amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, may be seated. All right, at this time I'd like to recognize elected officials that are here with us this evening. We have, of course, Counselor Jack Henderson, Counselor Mayor-elect GT Bynum, Counselor Dodson, Commissioner John Smallago, Duane Majet from the mayor's office, Major Brooks, oh I'm sorry, it's not Major Brooks anymore, I am so sorry, Deputy Chief Brooks, Sheriff Vic Rigolato, and Monroe Nichols is here this evening also.
Monroe?
Monroe, thank you. We also have District Attorney with us this evening and Chief Chuck Jordan, Chief Ray Driscoll also. And we also have the majors from the different areas. We have Major Yates and Major Bales and where's Major Franklin? Okay, Major Franklin is here also and Deputy Chief Larson is also here. Thank you so much for being here this evening with us. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Counselor Henderson.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say to each person here today, thank you for coming. Tulsa is a city that has had some interesting things happen in the past. And we're not looking for those kind of things to happen in the future. So I thought one of the best things we could do as a city, and some of the city councils have already voiced their opinions, State Representative Kevin Matthews, Senator, there was another senator involved in. We thought that if we could pull together some leadership with the city, law enforcement community, and just start a dialogue about what we can do as citizens of this city and law enforcement to bring about a unified front to keep Dallas in Dallas and not let the kind of things that's happening in these other cities happen in the city of Tulsa. And it is evident that all of these people are here today that this would be a great start. We invited the people that we thought were the stakeholders that could make this happen. And I am very much excited that each person that's represented here today, represent an agency or an organization or the county or the city or the state, to say, to send a message that Tulsa is wanting to be a unified city. And I think that if we work together as a unit to make sure that we don't have what other cities have and we can show how together we really are and we can start working on some of the problems to bring. There's a lot of untrusts among citizens with law enforcement. That should not be. Law enforcement should be citizens' best friend. That is who we should depend on and that's who we need to help us set the stage to make this right, to bring our city together. And I'm excited to see all of these people representing law enforcement here today. And I think that we're not going to have a long meeting. We're going to be able to let some different people talk and come out with some possible ideas, some things that we can do. But I think the main thing is we have to start the dialogue. And today is a good place to start the dialogue. And I just want to thank each of you for being here, the news media for the coverage, our mayor-elect for being here. I know each and every one of you guys had something else you could be doing today. But this is important enough, I think, that we're in the right place and we need to start the dialogue. So without any further delay, I think that anyone that's on the podium that wants to say something or just to give a general statement and then we could kind of go off into what we can do to make this situation better. Thank you again.
Who would like to start? I'll start. Chief Jordan, would you like to say something? Turn your microphone on.
I'm technically challenged, sorry. You know, I always say, first of all, I'm good friends with David Brown, who's the chief in Dallas. And, you know, I drove to work this morning and just thanked my lucky stars that we didn't have a similar situation in Tulsa. And I thought a lot, and I've been thinking all day about how do we, how do we close the gap between our minority communities, in fact, our entire community and our police department? And I think that the key is always going to be relationships and dialogue. The key is going to be, and I can't do it. You know, I can stand up here all day in front of a microphone at a press conference and everybody says, "Oh, that's really good stuff." But who's really going to make the difference? Are the men and women out there on the street with the Tulsa County Sheriff's Office and the Tulsa Police Department? They're talking to citizens every day. One of the things we've had a problem with is staffing levels. And thanks to the city council and the mayor, we're going to get better funding. We're going to have more officers, so we have more unassigned time to do the things we want to do in the area of community policing. But I'm just going to say, I don't see anything, I've seen falsehoods told on both sides of the arguments. People tend to defend their own positions. And when you start defending your own position and you're not completely truthful with yourself, you're never going to make any progress. And I'm just here to tell you, we're going to, we're going to own up to things that we're doing on the Tulsa Police Department wrong. And we expect other people to do the same thing. And that's how we're going to work together, is by those relationships. So I'm open to anything anybody suggests. I'm not saying I'm going to do anything anybody suggests, depending on what it is. But I'm certainly open to anything that anybody will suggest. And we're going to do everything we can do to make Tulsa an exemplary city, not just, not just a little bit better than Dallas. We want to be exemplary.
Sheriff, do you want to say something?
Sure, just briefly, and I think it would be appropriate this time if we could just all have a moment of silence for the officers that gave up their lives serving their communities in Dallas and serving this great nation. So if you'll bow your heads for just a moment, please. Thank you. I just want to, I share the same sentiments as the chief and as Counselor Henderson and I believe probably everybody up on this panel, that we do live in a city that is unique. Unique in the fact that we've had incidents throughout, at least in my 22 years here in law enforcement, that I believe anywhere else would have caused civil unrest as it has across our country. But we haven't had that. And I think the biggest reason, and here's where I kind of differ a little bit from Counselor Henderson, is I believe it is the trust that the community does have in its law enforcement. Do we always agree on everything? No. Will we always agree on everything? Absolutely not. But it's the communication that I've seen take place during these incidents here in Tulsa that has provided a peaceful venue for us to air out those differences. And I truly believe that what we can continue doing is that same exchange of communication to continue on in a peaceful manner throughout the, into the future in this city and county of Tulsa. Many of the Tulsa police officers in here were involved in the Good Friday murders. And that was a significant time here in Tulsa that truly, I received calls from different police agencies around the country that said, "Wow, how did you guys get through that without any civil unrest or violence or even a single solitary arrest that was related to that significant event?" And I can tell you firsthand, it was because of things like this, people in the, in the community reaching out, people waiting and being patient for the investigation to take its course. And that's why we got through that significant event without a single solitary arrest that was related to it. And that's what we need to continue to do. We need to be patient when things like this happen and let the system work the way that it's supposed to work and wait for those answers. There's nothing wrong with protesting, and I think the chief commented on that earlier. I think that's a right that every American has, is to protest in a peaceful manner. But I think for far too long, we have given a loud voice to that small part of society that would use violence in the name of justice. And we can no longer do that. The majority of our citizens, not only here in Tulsa but in the country, are law-abiding. And it's time that we make our voice much louder than that small portion that would use violence in the name of justice. Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that. I appreciate what you said, Sheriff. And I agree for the most part, but I don't, you know, I just came from the barber shop where there's not a lot of trust of law enforcement in general, but there's a lot of trust in relationships of individuals. I know myself and Counselor Henderson and several people in my community have a good relationship with the police chief, a good rate relationship with our county commissioner and our elected officials on every level, including the current mayor and our new mayor. And they call us every day because they don't know what's going to happen next. And I know that, you know Sheriff, that we had a problem with an individual being killed by a deputy. We had another individual killed by law enforcement with the Monroe bird issue. And that causes distrust. There are mistakes that are made and there are some people that just don't do what's right. And that's citizens and police officers. And so what the community is screaming out for right now, so that we don't have this incident, is, I have a good relationship with our district attorney. And we're hoping that people are assured that if someone is killed innocently, they'll be charged, whether they're a police officer or not. We need the courage here to do what's right, no matter whether or not a person's wearing a badge. And this is an opportunity to, you know, I came on the fire department with our fire chief here. I had many discussions with him and many discussions with the police chief about diversity and having people from the community wear those badges. And we have to make it a priority to seek and hire people that have relationships in the community. And so while we do have people that trust law enforcement, we have to make a greater effort to have the kinds of relationships that cause us to not even be concerned that a police officer that I grew up with, that I went to school with, that knows my relatives, is not going to shoot and kill me and I'm not going to shoot and kill them. And so while what you said is true, I think we need to take this opportunity to address the real issues related to the fear. And I think that on both sides, it's fear. You know, we had the, people want Second Amendment rights, the right to carry a firearm. And I understand one of these individuals may have had a license, but somebody had some fear for a person to die unnecessarily. And so we, we get away from those fears when we have these hard conversations and we come up with ways to have better police-community relations and have accountability and people knowing, if someone kills an officer, they're going to certainly have to pay the price. But we, we need to make sure that everybody knows that if an officer kills an individual that's innocent, they pay the price as well.
Can I make a comment? We did have that happen. We investigated it, we arrested him, and he's on his way to court.
Mr. Majet?
Yeah, I just wanted to say on behalf of Mayor Bartley, who's out of town, that actually, we're very pleased that Tulsa's leadership, both its clergy, the law enforcement agencies, local elected officials, and concerned citizens and civic groups are here today in response to these national tragedies. We can say that this, this type of collaboration and partnership really shows the true character of our community. As Sheriff mentioned with our history, I think Tulsa is uniquely situated to set a national standard on how to address tragedies that may hit our community, which was clearly demonstrated during the Good Friday shootings and the other tragedy that have, that events that have impacted our community. As a community, I know as a lifelong Tulsa, that Tulsans are not afraid to come together to address tough issues. As Senator Matthews said, we just have to do that. And I think now is an opportunity to move in that direction. That's our character as a city. And again, I'm really pleased that we've taken this opportunity to come together to address this matter before us today.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Fraternal Order of Police with the Tulsa Police Department and the Sheriff's Department for donating to a program in our district that allows young people, when they're out of school unsupervised, most prone to gang violence and teen pregnancy, to have the opportunity to be entrepreneurs. That kind of extending an olive branch goes a long way towards a solution. I want to thank those organizations and the Sheriff's Department and Police Department for their support of that program we have in our community. And those kinds of things lead to positive results.
Thank you. Counselor Dodson?
Yeah, boy, we've had a lot of good comments up here today. I wanted to remind people that not long ago, we voted as a council and with community leaders to designate Tulsa as a compassionate city. I believe we are that compassionate city. Through that, we reminded and pointed out that it is our desire as a community, as a city, to treat everybody with dignity and respect. And I think we do that on a very, very good level. We have had incidences in our city. We've learned from the past. We have not been without riot. We just celebrated a 95th anniversary for our own race riot here in town. And I think we've learned from that. We have no desire to go back to that. We continue to learn and grow from not only mistakes across the country, but mistakes that are made here locally and dealt with through law enforcement. We've had a number of those, which has been pointed out earlier, have been prosecuted or on their way either through the court system or already sentenced and on their way to prison. So I'm hoping that, that our community realizes that we are a strong city. We have an abundance of community leaders that can guide us when we're feeling, you know, downtrodden and challenged. And I encourage you to reach out to those faith leaders that you consider a force in your life. If you're feeling bothered or stressed or having issues with the recent national events, they're there to help you. But I think it just, it goes, it goes a long way to draw on the fact that we have a history here in Tulsa that allows us to build upon the mistakes we've had in the past and move forward while treating everybody with dignity and respect and not face what some of the other areas in the country are dealing with right now.
Thank you. Anybody else like to say anything?
I'm going to say something. I think that one of the things that we could take from this is that there are some basic things that law enforcement probably expects from the community. And there are some basic things that the community expects from law enforcement. If, a perfect example, if I'm stopped by a police officer and I knew the kind of reaction that I should give as a citizen with that police officer and they treated me with respect and honor and I treated them with respect and honor, how many citizens would not have been shot accidentally or would not have been shot, period? So the one thing that I think is, there are some basic things that could come out of this and further conversations that if, if the public believed enough and trusted enough in law enforcement that getting stopped is not a problem as long as everybody understands how they should treat one another. And I think that could lead to something really nice. Because I've talked to several people, when they get stopped by a police officer, they are afraid, they don't know what's going to happen. The policemen, like Kevin said, they don't know what's going to happen because they have fear also because of all kind of crazy things that have been going on in the United States for a long time. I just think that at some point, we need to create something that says, when you're stopped by a police officer, this is the kind of action that you should do. And the same way with a police officer, when they stop somebody, they need to know or conduct themselves in the same manner. And there's a lot of times that the officer gets a chance to make the call. The citizens very rarely get a chance to make the call. And, and we don't know what people are thinking when they get stopped. But we do know that if there is a trust factor, a believability that, hey, this could be, they could be stopping me for simple violation and we can both leave here either with a ticket or without a ticket, no gunplay, no drama at all. And the more often that that happens, the better off citizens would be to be able to reach out and to, to believe in law enforcement. I have a high respect for law enforcement because I know that without law enforcement, what would cities be like? Total chaos. I mean, I get it, I understand that. But there are people that don't see it the way I see it. And there's people that actually would run from a police officer and hadn't did anything. But just the fear that they have that something's going to happen, something's going to come down wrong because of something that happened in another city, we should have a way to get around that where that does not even come into play. And that's one of the reasons that I want to try to come together with law enforcement as an elected official to say, "We can make this better. We can get better than what we are." And, and, and I don't know, I don't have all the answers. And I don't know what main button or what main points that need to be. And it could be something that could be created to pass out to somebody. This is what policemen are, this is how they are trained, this is what they expect. And, and also the citizens could produce something like that. But I just think that the more that we understand each other, the more we trust and believe in each other, the less people will have to face the kind of situations that we're facing today. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. Commissioner Smallago, would you, as I call on you as you're coughing? Like to say anything?
Sure. And I apologize for my coughing. I'm quickly recovering from some sinus problems, that's why I'm hacking like I am. On these issues, you know, the question was raised, you know, and not really a question, but, but a compliment to our community here in Tulsa, that, that we don't, we don't see a lot of the things that we see in other, in other communities across the country. And I think that that is a, I think that's a wonderful thing. And I think that's why everyone in this room loves the community in which we live. We, we raise our family here. Many of us have grown up here. And for the group that you see in front of you here, we've all chosen to do what we can to do our best to help lead this community. And I think that the, I think what you've seen in Tulsa, for the most part, over the years, is a pretty calm and steady leadership group. And yeah, there have been disputes over the years for various reasons and, and things of that nature. But ultimately, you know, when it, when it comes down to it, the leaders understand what it takes to make a good community and they work hard to make that happen. And I, I do want to agree with the, when it, when it comes to that leadership and, you know, and having that good relationship with the community, the folks that you see up here are working hard for that. It's not just in the speeches we give tonight, but when we go out and talk with our constituents every day and, and, you know, convey those attitudes and, and like I say, that, that calm and steady approach to particular issues, I think it makes a big difference. But, but to what the chief said, I think in situations like this, what he said is absolutely correct, that the biggest reason why things are as good in Tulsa as they are is because of the work that our police officers and deputies do on a, on a day-to-day basis in communicating with, with people, with the citizens that they come in contact with, the work that they do every single day on the streets, making sure that, that everyone in our community understands that their job is to make life safer for them. I think we also have to keep in mind, I know there were some comments made about, you know, things that have happened in the past in, in our community and not, you know, not that distant past, quite frankly. And, you know, the situation that Senator Matthews brought up. And I think that, you know, the, the reality is, we, we have to recognize that there is a process for dealing with, with all of these things on both sides of the argument. And we have to let those processes play out. And I think that when you have the right people in, in leadership positions, like our district attorney, you're going to get sound judgment when it comes to deciding how these issues are dealt with through the court system. And, you know, as long as, as what Counselor Henderson said about training is true, that our officers are constantly being trained and educated about these issues and constantly talking with the citizens, as the chief said, you're going to, you're going to find that, that that relationship between the community and its government is, is going to be a positive one. And, and, you know, back to the process, we, we've seen some broken processes in our community over the last several months and years. And I want to give a big commendation to our sheriff, who has met those procedural challenges head-on in his office and has done a tremendous amount in a very short time to correct those procedural problems that have existed in the sheriff's office. And, and I want him to know, and I've said it to him privately and I'll say it to him publicly, that he has the full support of the county commissioners when it comes to trying to bring those reforms that need to be made and making sure that, that the sheriff's office has the resources it needs to do its job. And, you know, we all, we all have issues with our own budgets and dealing with that. And law enforcement has to live within the budgets that they have as well. But in the end, we recognize that, that the tools that are needed are vital and that we're going to stand by them. And so, you know, with that, I just, I just want to say once again that, that I really love the community that I live in. And I know that if any of you did not love the community that you lived in, you wouldn't be here. And so I hope that you're going to take that out and make the people that you know that weren't able to come or didn't want to come or didn't know about tonight and let them know that, that the leadership in this community is, is strong and we're dedicated to making it a safe place for everyone. And that, and that we seek better outcomes here and expect better outcomes here than, than what we see in other parts of the country.
Thank you very much. District Attorney Kuntzweiler, would you like to say anything?
No.
I'll squeeze our sheriff out of place here. Uh, I wanna echo, uh, what Counselor Henderson had said at the beginning, uh, which he, he referenced the idea that we need to view ourselves as a whole. You know, it's really not for the tongue to say to the ear that it's more important than the ear, any more than it's for the hand to tell the heart that it's more important than the heart. We all have functioning bodies and that body functions well when it's all working together. That's biblical, obviously. And I'm a Christian and many people in this room are, are of faith. We began this meeting with a pledge of allegiance and we began this meeting with a prayer. And I think it's more than just symbolism when your leaders and your community will all stand up and, and rededicate ourselves to our, our country and rededicate ourselves with prayer. I think the, the depth of our ability to overcome our problems is solely gonna be measured by each individual's willingness to examine their own conscience. It doesn't get any simpler than that. Every person is an individual and I, as a Christian, I firmly believe I'm on this planet for a very short time and my eternity is going to be measured by what I do during the time I'm here. It may be my choice to turn my back on God and choose not to listen or ask for his assistance. But that's not my option, nor is that my obligation. My obligation is to actually face my God and ask for his assistance in times like this. We are always going to be faced with chaotic circumstances. And as we began this proceeding with a prayer, we need to continue to turn to God and ask for his guidance to help us weather these storms so that we can do what we have to do, which is what Commissioner Henderson began, or Counselor Henderson began with, which is just operate as a whole as opposed to individual parts. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor America?
I think the statements that everybody's made here shows to me what's different about Tulsa and it's not just individuals in leadership roles. It's the fact that this diverse group, and it is a very diverse group in, in terms of politically and, and where we come from in this community and what we represent, and those in the audience as well. I hope, moving forward, that we can all, you know, one of the most, for me at least, one of the most depressing things about today and, and the hardest things to look at is as you see this unfold on social media and you see this sort of war of hashtags of, you know, this kind of life matters or this matters. And if you say this, that means you hate this. And in this, this just utter, everybody going in with this set view of this is, if you don't say this hashtag and endorse that, that means you've taken a position and you've carved out some ground and you're my enemy. And if you do that, I appreciate very much that people here who I know passionately represent different parts of this community didn't come here tonight. I didn't hear anybody talk that way or see people here who think that if you only take this one position, that's the, that's the only good position, that's the only position that loves Tulsa. And I think we need to have a commitment individually and as a community, and it isn't just the leaders, it's every one of us in Tulsa, it's you guys, it's all of us to say, to hold ourselves accountable to, whether it's with your God, your conscience, your, your mom, whatever it is that helps you think about what's the right thing to do. And to not just walk in tonight or tomorrow or next week or when you pull over somebody or when you're pulled over and think, okay, well, the hashtag is this and that's my position and that's what I believe tonight, but to really listen. I think it's important that we listen to what Senator Matthews said and understand that there isn't a law enforcement position of this is how a stop should be handled. Because we need to listen to what the community says and, and, and make that be part of that. And, and that goes both ways, that when law enforcement says, here's why we do it this way, and the community says, okay, we get that and we can, we can learn and understand and respect that. And we've gotta continue this commitment, I think, to each other and to ourselves to just say, to be willing to not put ourself in that box and say, I'm the law enforcement side, I'm the community side, I'm the, the pacifist side, whatever these alleged sides are. And to be willing to keep every day, be willing to listen to somebody who comes from a different perspective and say, you're right, I might've been wrong, I might've been a little bit wrong, we can make this a little bit or a lot better as we continue to listen to each other and continue to evolve. And I do, I think that's what sets us apart is we're, we're awfully blessed right now that we've got people at all levels, leadership and all these different, the roles that are up here, but, but in particular within the community as well, who are willing to genuinely have that kind of communication, genuinely listen to each other and not then walk back and say, okay, yeah, but I'm hashtag Black Lives Matter, I'm hashtag Blue Lives Matter, or I'm hashtag All Lives Matter, and anybody who's on a different one is a different team. So, I make that commitment to myself and to you guys and, and, you know, we'll keep, hopefully keeping each other honest and keep making it, it's gonna be evolving process. There isn't something that somebody, nobody here, I think, knows, okay, here's the blueprint, we come out and now we fix it all. And so, we'll continue to work on that and continue to listen to each other and, you know, continue to make us be the community that stands out for doing this as well as can be done. Appreciate you all up here and out there.
Counselor Dodson?
I just wanted to make one final comment. When it comes to accidents, errors, lapses in judgment, rash decisions, those decisions or movements of one person that however misguided or accidental may be, does not divine, define the community and should not define the community's reaction to it. I think if we can all remember that anybody can have a momentary lapse, but that doesn't, shouldn't, doesn't and shouldn't define how the community reacts to it, especially before time for reflection has had an opportunity to, uh, move through the channels. Thank you.
Mayor Lett Bynum?
You know, I've spent a lot of time, not just today, but over the last several months, thinking about this issue because the, I think the great concern for many of us is that the things that we hear about that happen in other cities, there's a feeling that it could happen in any city, that it didn't just, you know, happen in one place because that place is filled with a bunch of hateful people. Uh, that the cities where these things have happened have good people just like we have here in Tulsa. Uh, and what happens is a tragedy in every case. And it didn't just start in the last few years. You know, there is a, a, a police memorial here where we honor every year, police officers who've been victims of violence, uh, and murder in the line of duty. And the history books of our country are filled with the stories of people, particularly in our minority communities, who've been victims of violence and murder. So, these are not things that just started, but they are things that we're more aware of now because of advances in technology, because there's more video coverage of it than there might've been in years past. And that presents us an opportunity. Uh, it presents us an opportunity to think about, how do we change this awful thing that has happened for centuries? And what occurs to me, and, and I didn't really intend to speak coming here tonight, I mainly, I have so much respect for the other people that were here tonight, I wanted to hear what they had to say. And kind of what I've gathered from each of them in hearing it, hearing them speak tonight, is this need for understanding on, within any community, but for us as Tulsans, particularly here in Tulsa. Because when you have a situation where, particularly when there's a, uh, and think about it in your own life, whether you are white or black or live in any part of town, if you have a, an encounter with a, a law enforcement person, is that a low-stress, happy moment in your life? Unless you're married to one of them or they're a family member, probably not. It's a stressful situation. And because it's a stressful situation for you, it's a stressful situation for them. Because there's not a good level of understanding there. Uh, and so, that's why I think the challenge for us, and, and when you have that stress, that stress can lead to an escalation of emotions, which can lead to violence on one side or the other. And so, the, the challenge for us, I think, as Americans in the 21st century, with all of these opportunities to see these tragedies unfold in front of us, is to take up that challenge, to acknowledge that we need greater understanding, uh, between those of us who are not law enforcement personnel and those who are. And, and on both sides, I think Senator Matthews nailed it. It, it is in both directions. And that's something that perhaps, I think, to Counselor America's point, in the past, people thought it needed to be, well, one side needed to get their act together or the other side did, but we all do. And so, I, I think as, for Tulsans, as Tulsans, I, and I love what Counselor Henderson said about just the concrete ways that we can improve understanding. It isn't even so complex as understanding everything that a police officer has to deal with in a, in a shift or everything that, uh, you know, a, a, a black Tulsan has to, has had to deal with in their life when they've been pulled over by police officers. It's a, it can be as simple as being taught what you should do when you get pulled over by the police. I mean, I was fortunate enough to be told that in driver's ed, but there's a lot of people who weren't. So, these are the types of things that I think we as a community need to take up that challenge and need to work on, or how we can improve understanding amongst ourselves so that we, I think, can accomplish a goal which all of us want to accomplish, which is reducing violence, reducing death and reducing tragedy, uh, certainly in our country overall, but we can start right here at home. So, I really do, I appreciate, I came here thinking I was gonna get to hear from you all tonight, but I am just very thankful that you all took the time and on short notice too, on a Friday evening, to come here and speak with, with all of us on this. Thank you.
Counselor Henderson, did you?
Yes, I, I just wanna kinda, uh, wrap it up. I told people that you wouldn't be here alone. We've been here now for forty-five minutes and some of us have got other, uh, events that we need to try to make. But what I do hope that we can leave here on one accord saying is that what we started, it needs to be more of it, more dialogue like we're doing here to set up other meetings where we can truly look at, and, and, and we know that we got a good police force, we got a good sheriff's office, we got a good district attorney. But we can all do better than what we're doing. And there's always ways to look at things and to make it better and to get this community involved with law enforcement in a different way than what they are today. That would be a goal that I think that we should try to shoot for. Cause I talk to people all the time in all parts of this city and I know that people want to have a safe community. They really do. And anything that we can do to make that happen and make people feel safer, that's what our goal should be and that's what we should shoot for. And I just hope that you guys agree with me that we should continue this dialogue and try to find better ways to make people feel safer and make this community a better community. And with that...
Can I just do something real quick?
Yes.
I, I fail to, uh, recognize Captain Tom Bell is also here in the audience with us this evening. Also, we have Chaplain Danny Lynchford here with us. Would you mind coming up and saying a few words because you have been there with our police and fire department when they have seen the worst?
I'm pretty good doing Bible verses, except randomly. I have been there and I know that nothing really changes unless people get uncomfortable. The talks that I've seen through the years, I, I see the misunderstandings. I've seen officers and how they have to respond when they've shot someone and what it does to them emotionally. It, it's nothing like television. It does not affect that officer the way it looks like on television. It, it takes a part of his life as well. Uh, I know what it's like to, to say something is as simple as the way you act on a car stop can determine a lot, and that's true. You can say that, that, uh, you should handle it in court, but what if you don't have the money to get an attorney to handle it in court? There, there's a whole different perspective and, and I think what you started here is wonderful. Personally, I think it needed to be said at this particular time and I think it's been said well in the spirit of this meeting has been something that, that has touched me. And I just encourage these dialogues continue. I would encourage my fellow ministers to get involved with their police department. I've even talked to the chief and some others about having our ministers go through a shoot, don't shoot scenario that are real-life incidents and just to get to see what that's like. I, I can't, I can't show every police officer what it's like to be black because I'm as white as the inside of an Oreo cookie. But, uh, hopefully, we can all do our part and see the dream that we have come true.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this, um, we're gonna conclude this meeting, um, but I just wanna remind everyone that we're, there is a candlelight ritual down at Morning Star Baptist Church, um, down on Pine Street. We, um, encourage you all to, to join us there. We just did this just a couple of weeks ago to honor the, the victims in Orlando. We've seen so much hate throughout our nation. We have had hate here in, in Tulsa, um, and several years ago, and we saw what it did to our community. And at that time, we, we've learned from, uh, from history on how to fight the hate. And I hope that everyone will just grab someone's hand and join us down at the Morning Star Church to honor the, the victims in Dallas. Um, at this time, I would like to call Reverend Brewster to the podium to give us our closing.
You, uh, can't give a minister a microphone and not have them say a few words as well. I love Tulsa. Um, I grew up in Oklahoma City and was fortunate enough to get to move here, uh, six years ago, um, for a job at Phillips Theological Seminary and I've been blessed ever since. But beautiful home in midtown Tulsa, just around the corner. I live next door to a Tulsa police officer and I let him use my ice scraper one time because he didn't have one, he was scraping it with his hands when it was cold. A unique thing happened to me though, when I moved to north, moved to Tulsa, was it was odd to me, the assumptions in the media about North Tulsa. North Tulsa is assumed to be a scary place. We can't sit here tonight and just say we have everything together when we still carry those assumptions about a community of people. So, it hurts my heart to hear leaders in our city saying what a great community we have, because yes, we do. But we also have a community that has work to be done. Cause we are one poor decision away from being Baton Rouge or being Minneapolis-St. Paul. I also wanna say that there are two other lives that we need to give a moment of silence for this evening, not just the officers who died in Dallas, but Alton Sterling and Valando Castillo, if we could have a moment of silence for them as well. Thank you. I send us forth from this place knowing that much work is left to be done. We have good men and women who serve our city and our county, and we have people who are scared to leave their homes because of the people in uniform. That is not because of any individual decision, but because of a system of oppression and racism that we live in. And by the grace of God, we have the opportunity to come together as a community to... And by the grace of God, we have the opportunity to come together as a community to admit we have a problem, to address the problem, and as communities of color and of communities of privilege, work to make this place an example and a shining light for what real inter-race relations looks like. And that starts from admitting the sin that exists. So, go from... So, my prayer is this, that we leave this place ready to do the hard work of listening and self-reflection, in the name of God. Amen.
Thank you, and we are adjourned.